Good morning, everyone. Please stand for the Pledge of Pleasure. The prayer today is Almighty and Loving Father. We're gathered here today to celebrate the 203rd Great Geogga County Fair. Send us your Holy Spirit to guide us and give us wisdom to understand every topic that we discuss today. Enlighten our minds and let our love be upon us. We strive to make the best better. Our junior firm children are competing with their projects with high hopes of doing well. But at the fair, over the years, you learn how to win and you learn how to lose. But you always can congratulate the winner. The blessings are the four aged friends and families. They are forever. County fairs come and go. Trophies collect dust. Ribbons get tossed to the side, but the memories are never forgotten and friendships are never replaced. A good friend is like a four leaf clover, hard to find and lucky to have. This is a quote from Helen Keller. Alone, we can do so little. Together, we can do so much. God bless the Great Geogga County Fair and the volunteers who put it on. Amen. At this time, we're going to have a welcome to the Great Geogga County Fair from President Wendy Anderson.
Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Great Geogga County Fair today. It's beautiful weather. It's a little chilly this morning, but that sun's out now. I'm going to warm things up nicely. We'd like to give a special thank you to the Commissioners for the help that they gave us in getting that poultry building and the new livestock youth center open. And it's doing fabulously and it's full of birds and it's full of animals and kids. And that's what we like to see here. So we so appreciate that. Everybody just have a great time today and go see those sea lions and go see, we've got pirates this year and many other things. So we appreciate y'all being here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have something here.
Because she's an earring aficionado.
Oh, thank you so much.
She's from Fair Frost.
Thank you. That was really sweet.
Okay, now we'll introduce the elected officials out in the audience. We have Sheriff Scott Hildebrandt, Jim Flay, County Prosecutor, Sheila Bevington, the Clerk of Courts, Celeste Mullins, the Recorder, Andy Hoppe, our Engineer, keeps our roads safe and sound. Anybody else? Katie Berger from Congressman Dave Joyce's office.
I'm sorry.
I'm Emily DiOrio. I'm from the United States Southern John Houston's office.
And then River, that's here from Congressman Dave Joyce's office as well. And again, welcome, everyone. Item number one.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Okay, on August 20th, I approved an encumbrance for a formal contract purchase order from the Commissioners to APG Office Furnishings Incorporated for the furniture, furnishings and equipment for the courthouse expansion project. On August 28th, I approved a travel encumbrance from the Common Pleas Court to attend the 2025 Ohio Digital Government Summit from Engineering, to attend the County Engineering Association of Ohio G I S Conference, from Job and Family Services, to attend the Ohio Family and Children First Coordinators Association Annual Conference, and from the Probate Court to attend the Ohio Association of Magistrates Fall Conference. I also approved a then and now encumbrance from the Common Pleas Court to Family Pride of Northeast Ohio for program services from February to June 2025 that were not previously encumbered. I approved a voucher for $29,633.84 from the Commissioner's Office to the Geogga County Airport Authority for the local match on pay request number three of the parallel taxiway project. Also approved a voucher for $16,444 from the Commissioner's Office to Destination Geogga for the second quarter 2025 bed tax distribution. I approved a voucher for $20,315 from Maintenance to C T Consultants for professional services rendered in regards to the Safety Center Parking Lot Project. And finally, I approved a revenue certification from the Board of Elections for additional transfers in revenue not originally budgeted for 2025. Item number two, on August 20th, 2025, for maintenance, I accepted the resignation of Kevin Borsey, electrician, number 1925, to be effective August 12th, 2025. For the Department on Aging, I approved an unpaid medical leave of absence for Mindy Hudek, an information and referral assistant, for up to 64 hours during the period of August 18th, 2025 through August 27th, 2025, for time not covered by a cured sick and vacation leave. On August 21st, 2025, I granted for maintenance permission to advertise for the position of electrician, number 1925. This position will remain posted until filled. On August 25th, 2025, I approved for the Department on Aging, hiring Rhonda Dwyer to the position of full time information and referral assistant, number 1017, to be effective 15 September 2025, at the rate of $17.58 per hour with a one year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. And finally, on August 25th, I approved and executed for community and economic development, the notice to proceed for Gold Star Roofing LLC for the Chagrin Falls Park Community Center Pavilion Roof Replacement and Community Center Siding Replacement under the CDBG Grant Number B-F23-1AZ-1. And that's all.
Thank you. Item number three, financials.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Adrian Gordon from the Commissioners' Office. I believe Amy inadvertently read the financials for today, so if you would like me to, I can read that again if you would like me to.
We're good.
Oh, you're good, okay. So, that was the financials for today.
Your voice sounded so much nicer.
Adrian, can you talk about the bed tax? Like, how is that compared this year to prior years?
So, the bed tax has gone up a little bit over the last three years, probably about $7,000. It does tend to fluctuate, so it requires a certain amount per bed be given to the county when they rent it out. So Debbie Ashburn in our office collects that and then does the distributions, which mostly go to Destination Geogga. There's some that go to some of the townships if they don't have a bed tax of their own, so.
Okay. Thank you. I move to approve the financials.
Second.
Mr. Spudlin.
Aye.
Mr. Breagan.
Aye.
Yes. Thank you very much. Sure. Number four on the agenda is the Commissioners' Office's request from the Board to approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the request for partial payment number 23 for Infinity Construction Company Incorporated for the Geogga County Courthouse Expansion, GMP Phase Number One and Two, expenses in the amount of $1,130,850.38. And this pay request has been reviewed by T V A and N V Five, and they've approved it signed off on it.
Look at you anticipating my question. All right, I make a motion to approve item number four.
Second.
Mr. Spudlin.
Aye.
Mr. Breagan.
Aye.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Item number five is the Board of Mental Health and Recovery Services.
Thank you.
I wasn't sure. I apologize. On behalf of the Geogga Board of Mental Health and Recovery
Services, our Executive Director, Christine McComack, and on August 31st marks International Overdose Awareness Day. It's a global movement to remember those we've lost to overdoses and to honor their lives and to recommit ourselves to ending this preventable tragedy. So let me begin by acknowledging the tragic pain that brings us, many of us here today. Overdose just doesn't claim lives. It shatters families. It ripples through communities and it leaves a permanent mark on our hearts. Recently, we celebrated a remarkable milestone seven months into 2025 with no fatal overdoses in Geogga County. That achievement was a tremendous progress reflecting on the incredible work of our entire community. But now we've learned of one overdose death this year, a reminder that our fight is far from over. This loss deepens our determination to prevent further heartbreak. Each life lost is not a number. It's a story, a family, a piece of our community that we vow to honor through action. So we reflect on what brought us here from 2020 to 2024. Geogga reported 55 overdose deaths. In 2020, we saw 12, which rose to 19 in 2021 as the opioid epidemic tightened its script during the pandemic. By 2023, that number fell to 11, and in 2024, we saw a 45% decline to six deaths. Even with this year's loss, our progress is undeniable, driven by the efforts of our families, our churches, behavioral health agencies, health department, J F S, first responders, courts, victim advocates, and schools, who guide individuals towards recovery and show up with compassion, proving every life in Geogga County is worth saving. The overdose crisis remains very complex, intertwined with mental health struggles and the persistent threat of substances like fentanyl. In Geogga County, we've seen how overdose and suicides nearly 100 combined deaths in recent years. Today's gathering is a powerful response of commitment to awareness, resources, and compassion. To those grieving, know that you're not alone. To those in recovery, your courage lights our way. And to those supporting others, your strength holds us together. Let's renew our commitment. Things that we can do is reach out to a neighbor and advocate in support our local recovery services. Commissioners, I thank you for recognizing August 31st as International Overdose Awareness Day, for remembering and for choosing to act. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine, what impact do you think federal policy has on these, the decrease in overdose deaths?
Absolutely. We have seen a decrease in overdoses throughout the state and, you know, nationally. And so I do believe that we're definitely moving in the right direction.
And this reflects my red lines, Christine, the resolutions. I make a motion to approve item number five.
Second.
Mr. Spudlin.
Aye.
Mr. Breagan.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number six, County Prosecutor's Office.
Morning.
Morning.
Happy Fair Thursday. So I've got three items on the agenda. The Sheriff's going to join me for number eight. But number six, so on the topic of the opioid crisis, if you may recall, some years ago, we became part of the National Opioid Litigation Consortium and pursued claims on behalf of Geogga County and its subdivisions against opioid manufacturers, distributors, and wholesalers. And so as part of that litigation, there's been a number of settlements. There has been some test cases that have gone to trial with um There has been some test cases that have gone to trial with mostly positive results for the communities. So many of the companies are entering into these nationwide settlements. So as a result of that, we have been receiving settlement money. Part of that, you may also recall for some background, we entered into the One Ohio, which is the state of Ohio came together and formed its own group that pretty much everybody has participated in, where a percentage of the settlement funds go into a fund that's divvied up by district. And I think, Mr. DeVore, you're...
Yeah, I'm chairman of the Region 13, which is actually the Lake Joga and Portage.
Yeah, so that kind of is a mechanism for distributing the funding that goes into the One Ohio program. And then the rest of the funds go to, direct to the subdivision. So right now, we have approximately $670,000 in county opioid fund. And so, and I'll get to that other part later. But as I continue to work with the lawyers in the National Consortium to manage the settlements, and there's just a number of approvals that are coming in, and September's a big month. I sent you a bunch of background information on that. So there's the Purdue Pharma Bankruptcy Plan, which I think is $8 billion. The Sackler Settlement Agreement, that's the private family that owned one of the major manufacturers, that there was so much liability there, they decided to pay it out of their family fortune. So there's that settlement agreement. And then there's new potential settlement agreements and litigation with a number of other opioid defendants. I think there's seven of them. So I prepared the resolution, and what I'm asking you for is to approve the bankruptcy plan, the Sackler settlement, and approve settlements or pursuing claims against these other opioid defendants, and then authorizing me to execute all the necessary documents. Because there's just, they come in and, you know, I always send it to Jim and Adrian, but there's just constantly stuff that needs to be done. And if you, we did this before, I think, when we were going through the One Ohio, where I kind of, you authorized me to handle some of this. So that's what I'm asking for again, that's the resolution that's before you.
Any questions?
What's the overall settlement for all these different cases?
It's billions. I mean, just the Purdue is $8 billion. I don't have, it's in the tens of billions of dollars. I don't have the figure offhand. And part of it was with the Sackler, the original bankruptcy plan was not approved. There was an appeal, and so it's been working its way through different courts throughout the country. So this is, I think, round two on the Pharma Bankruptcy Plan, and then the Sackler Settlement. This is not their first stab at it, if I recall.
So I move to approve item number six.
Second.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Item eight.
Seven.
Or seven, I'm sorry. I'm holding a discussion with the Board regarding the use of the opioid settlement funds. So we have been building up these funds over time. I think we spent some of them at one point, but they are restricted funds. The State Auditor put out guidance on what they can be spent for. I sent that to all of you in your packets. And it's a wide range of, you know, prevention, treatment, mostly under those umbrellas. And it's a mixture of the One Ohio Agreement and the different judgment entries that the courts have approved these settlements under. They want to make sure the funds are being used for some opioid remediation and prevention. So anyway, going back a little bit, I was trying to figure, you need a way to spend this money, because you're gonna quickly get to be about a million dollars next year, I think. You're gonna hit like the million dollar mark if you keep waiting to. And again, I mean, part of the point of this is getting this money out to the community and using it for its intended purposes. I know, Jim, with your group, with our region, I mean, you guys have given away a lot of grants.
Well, the first wave of money was maybe a year ago. And in Region 13, the four counties, we received $2.3 million, and everybody had their share, according to the formula that the state designed. And then we were told that in Columbus, they were gonna have some kind of hybrid conversation to invest some of the money. The money to One Ohio Foundation Recovery was supposed to last 18 years, but with a hybrid, if they invest it, it can last 25 to 30 years. And so the wave of money is gonna be like every year and a half, maybe, or whatever, you know. So we're supposed to get $2.1 million the next wave, so.
So with the Commissioners handling this, you know, this $670,000, hopefully soon to be about $600,000 for the next item. But we were kind of working through a solution to this issue. It is restricted, they are restricted funds. To be very frank, the Commissioner's Office is not staffed or set up to run a grant program and to do grant monitoring. And it's just not, it's just not something you're set up to do. But it's within your purview of how these funds are spent, and there's a need for them. So I talked to Commissioner DeVore about these issues, and Linda Brerhenny was involved. We had a meeting some months back.
Yeah, we had a committee, yourself, Linda Brerhenny, myself, and Christine McCommeac from Board of Mental Health.
Yeah, and Christine was fantastic to really step forward. The mental, Christine and her group, they're set up to do this stuff. They're set up to review grants, let them look at the funding source, look at the restrictions on funding, you know, make recommendations to a board. They make them usually to their board. In this case, they'd be making them to you, and you would ultimately decide who gets the grant money. And then the monitoring after the fact. So it takes, very graciously she offered to take that all off your plate. And basically, the Commissioners, under the agreement that I drafted, the Commissioners would dedicate $100,000 a year of these opioid funds as kind of, hey, these are available for grants. Christine and her group would then, you know, advertise that, vet those applications, and make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners for making awards. And the other nice thing is, you know, she talked about being able to leverage this money as local match money to then get more grants. So, you know, maybe there's a grant that requires a local match, we're having trouble with the local match, you could use your funds for that.
I, like, I have some minor red line, my name's spelled wrong on this, you know, some things like that.
Really?
Yeah. We can talk about that later.
You don't have as many signs up as Jim.
Apparently not, I know. My name wasn't lighting the way to the fairgrounds this morning. But yeah, we can go through the...
Oh, sorry about that.
No, it's all right. The only, like, major, like substantive issue I wanted to talk about was, you know, it says that the Commissioners shall make $100,000 available. And I would like to hedge that somewhat, like up to, or, you know, because my concern is just, maybe we don't get $100,000 worth of projects that we think are worthwhile projects. And I don't want to, like, feel forced to spend the money. So that would be the only language I'd like to see softened, and then...
So, you know, that was a discussion point, and I will tell you that the reason I, the way I look at this is, you're not obligated to award 100, but you're making 100 available because Christine kind of needs to be able to tell people, hey, there's $100,000 available.
I got you.
You don't have to award it all.
I just, that's kind of what I wanted to make sure.
You also could, it could be a situation where you have a number of people come in and you award 120.
Right, no, exactly.
If you're not limited up or down. So, I mean, I could soften it, but I also, I know, you know, Christine wants to be able to say, hey, there's $100,000 available, because that's kind of an important...
No, that's...
That was the only reason for that.
That's fair to say available, rather than we will grant $100,000.
That's, yeah, that was my thought.
Okay. No, that's helpful. Yeah, I mean, I just wouldn't want to, like I said, give money away because we are obligated to, if we don't think it's, if they're worthy projects. And I mean, on the other side, I mean, we may want to give 150 available if there's things available that we think makes sense.
And again, I'm kind of estimating that, you know, over the next 12 to 18 months, if you don't spend any of the money, you're gonna be up, you're gonna hit seven figures.
Right.
Is, because we just, Adrian, we just got 100 something like in the last 30 days.
Yes.
So you gotta, you gotta get this money out of the community. That's the point of it. You know, and when you start sitting on a million bucks, then, you know, that becomes problematic, I think, for a number of reasons. So this was just our stab at trying to, and again, Christine's very gracious and helpful, and, you know, let's kind of outsource the grant vetting and the advertising to somebody who does it for a living, right?
Right, absolutely.
Their job.
I agree.
So that's just my thought. I mean, you don't have to do anything today, it's just a draft. I'll fix the, I spelled your name right in the email. So...
You spelled services wrong, too, in the first name.
Well, you know...
Wow.
Nice spell check. Well, sorry about that. Well, yeah, so, yeah, let me know.
Services, yeah, that's all right.
I like everything, how you put it together, Jim. I hate to hesitate on this. We should do this pretty quickly here because there's people that need help now, today. And with mental health and drug addiction, there's probably 80 to 90% of the people dual diagnosis. Some mental illness, they need help in drugs. So, great discussion.
Yeah, so under this, the grant period opens January 1st, so this would start in January. But I think you should talk to Christine on taking action, or if you want to tweak this. She needs to be able to advertise it. So, you know, we kind of would want to get some direction here. Or maybe you don't want to do this at all, whatever. But I want to, you know, get some direction so we can advertise this, you know, this fall for awards starting in January.
Can I, I'll send you a red line later.
Listen, come on, edit any of my documents. I was running through you first. I'm bad at typing.
And then item number eight.
The Sheriff's gonna come up and join me for this one. I've been talking too much.
How do you spell Helder Grand?
So item eight. Speaking of opioid funds, looking at the permitted uses, one of the issues that the Sheriff and I have looked at, and something that's been part of a pilot program throughout the state, is this MX-908 drug testing device. And what that does is, it would provide drug testing at the Sheriff's Office for, you know, if there's an arrest, we find, you know, suspected illegal drugs. It would provide us with the same type of testing that the drug lab uses, but without the hassle of going to the lab. So I don't know, Sheriff, if you want to talk about it.
Well, the drug testing has always been a problem. Every new Attorney General that comes in says he's gonna fix the lab, or they're gonna fix the problems, and they end up right back where they were. At least when the last Attorney General started this program, where we can do some of that drug testing and get the results back quicker. Because the problem was, because of the constraints that the prosecutor has with the amount of time it takes for it to wait, maybe six, eight months to give results back, in the meantime, if it's a drug dealer, they're out there selling drugs for six or eight months. We want to be able to do this testing immediately, do it. We've already got people trained. We're gonna be in partnership with the AG as far as the supplies, and we can get these people off the streets much sooner, and I think it will be a benefit for everybody in the county. Because we're gonna open that up to all of the law enforcement in the county. They'll be able to come and help and get their drugs tested because we have the people trained. And if they want to train people, we can let them do that, too. And they can, you know, primarily, you know, be at our office, and when drugs come in, we can possibly confirm and then we can get some charges filed.
Yeah, and one of the, you know, we talk about with the overdoses and what I think all of us have done better over these years in responding to this drug epidemic and the opioid epidemic, one of the things that we've done well is, we've started these programs, and there's Drug Court, and there's interventions, and Brayden Wood, and, you know, Mental Health Court, and all these things that are, well, if you arrest somebody for drug, you know, if you stop somebody and they have meth or fentanyl on them, and you have to wait for the lab for four or five months in order to charge them, and then they're getting summons, so by the time they're in court, it's six months later. And so if you're not quickly getting these interventions, then it really kind of defeats a lot of the help that we're ready to offer. Because unfortunately, for even the user, I mean, the Sheriff's 100% right on the traffickers, but for the user level, we need to get them in quickly and get the interventions going. And oftentimes, that's through interfacing with the criminal justice system.
Yeah, a lot of bad things can happen in that four or five months when the tests are being done. Would there be any time in which you would send drugs to the BCI? Would there be times when you wouldn't use this machine?
Yeah, I mean, there might be, you know, with some of the fentanyl mixtures now, there's some issues where, you know, we might have to send it out for testing. Also, we would also have the option for confirmation testing.
Yeah.
So this testing, it has, in most counties, and when I talk to other prosecutors, I think there's a couple of exceptions where they have some problems with judges, frankly. But in most of the counties, the, these are just being able to use through prosecution, and they don't even need to be sent out for confirmation testing. But if we were gonna have a trial, I would, you know, especially a drug trafficking trial, I'd probably send it out to the lab for confirmation testing.
But you would use it, you would use the mask spec, this portable mask spec for initial testing and then send it out?
Absolutely.
So you're still, you're able to make the arrest?
Yeah, I want the probable cause for the arrest and the indictment. That's what we're looking for. And right now, we're not able to get that. Or even if we do have a problem, and the guy says, hey, it's heroin, and they want to arrest him, well, I can't get to the, I have to take that case to the grand jury within 60 days, and if he's in jail, I have to try him within 90 days. The labs are taking way longer than that. So it's really, it's a pointless exercise, whereas with this, we could avoid all that.
And Jim, could you talk a little bit about how often you think this machine will be used?
Sure. You know, we ran some numbers just off of last year's numbers. So on last year's numbers, the Sheriff's Office, who's, the Sheriff's Office does 50% of the felony cases, well, in this county. But the Sheriff's Office sent 140 items to BCI for cattle house, just the Sheriff's Office. So if you double that, you know, approximately, you know, countywide with the other agencies, Chester, Main Bridge mainly, you know, you'd be looking at, you know, 280, maybe close to 300, potential uses for the machine each year.
Yeah, I think this machine would help the court system and actually help the people that need help, get them in the right direction with recovery, whatever they need. So it's always about timing, guys. I think this machine would really help Joga County.
So I gotta ask a question, because I was involved in obtaining this machine in Portage County, which you were given the machine for free from the Attorney General's Office. Is there any other opportunities that they're gonna be...
They're looking to source it. So the machine that Portage got was supposed to be ours.
So from what I understand was, is they were, and the reason that Portage got it wasn't just because of the volume of arrests that were being made and the volume of drugs that were being there. But, you know, the original understanding was, is they were gonna expand this program, and, you know, Portage was selected for the, you know, for the Guinea pig of the death test.
Oh, is that the pilot program? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a re-proach, especially after, you know, they had called me from the Attorney General's Office, that we were gonna get it, and we sent people to training, and then he said, oh, that guy misspoken for a portage. So, okay, well, we'll pick the next one, while there are no next ones.
So the Portage one was a grant? Is that what happened?
No, they gave it to, they gave it to Portage County for free.
Who's that?
The AG.
The Attorney General's Office.
The AG, so, but it was like a grant from the AG, right?
So the AG bought, I think, maybe eight or 10 or dozen or something?
Yeah, there was nine machines.
So you gotta understand, from the AG's point of view, they wanted to lessen the burden at the labs.
Yeah.
Because they're saying the backlog, although they deploy these machines, and I'm not getting results faster from the lab, so, but, so they were trying to focus on the high volume, higher volume counts. That's why they kind of at the last minute took our machine, gave it to Portage. We have made multiple inquiries, that was over a year ago.
No, more than that, almost three years ago.
We've made multiple inquiries to try to get a free machine from the AG.
Yeah.
They are not doing any more machines. And what kind of spurred this was, A, the opioid fund balance is getting high, and this is a permitted use.
Yeah.
And B, the Ashland County Prosecutor actually, he was in the same spot as us, and they actually have a higher volume than us, because they've got 70,000 goes through there. So they have more drug cases, significantly more drug cases than we do. So, they have more drug cases, significantly more drug cases than we do. And the Ashland County Prosecutor, he wanted to get, they wouldn't give him a free one either from the AG's office. So, he went and bought one. And it's operated out of the sheriff's office, but the prosecutor had purchased it, and he thinks it's crazy. I mean, he says it's wonderful. And again, from a court perspective, most of our low-level drug possessions, they're automatically eligible for intervention, which is a drug diversion.
Yeah.
By state law, they're just automatically eligible. So, for that vast majority of these drug possession cases, this testing's going to be sufficient to get them into court, get them into those interventions, and resolve the case without burdening the crime guy.
Yeah, and hopefully turn their life around. Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve item number eight.
Second.
Which is the one?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's the most work I've ever been to do.
Item number nine, Department of Community and Economic Development.
Emily Hawke-Mackey, Department of Community and Economic Development. Department of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board's approval to execute Resolution Number 25-171, authorizing the Board of the Geodes County Commissioners to make applications to the State of Ohio Office of Community Development for the use of the Economic Development Revolving Low Fund for a community development project. And that is for the, it's a resolution to allow me to apply for the funds to purchase the Library Administration that link for.
So, I know it made some reference to a local share. Is that really from the Department on Aging? Is that what that's talking about?
Yes.
Okay. That's, yeah, because it's every month the commissioners.
Because they're putting in the $600,000.
Okay, got it. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Which is the one?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning.
Charles Teecatch, Maintenance Department. I have the next four items on the agenda. The first one is item number 10. The Maintenance Department is requesting the Board's approval to execute a service contract agreement with McPhillips Plumbing Heating and Air Conditioning Company to replace seven CWHW wall units on the Geodes County Auditor, Mailroom Offices, to be completed within 180 days of August 28th, 125, in an amount up to the same $34,850.
Chuck, did you get multiple quotes for these?
This is not by project, but I'm not quite sure.
Okay.
And then quotes for the seat.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Which is the one?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. Items number 11, 12, and 13 are all related to the County Maintenance Bar and Roof Replacement Project. We sent out for bids on that, we did receive seven bids on that one.
Yeah.
The first item is item number 11. It is, the Maintenance Department is requesting the Board reject a bid submitted by Gold Star Roofing LLC for the County Maintenance Bar and Roof Replacement Project, as it might require bid guarantee making it non-responsive.
Does that mean it didn't have the bid bond?
Correct.
Okay. And could we just go through the 11, 12, and 13, and then we vote?
Sure. Number 12 is, the Maintenance Department is requesting the Board reject the bids submitted by Verveer Roofing Company Incorporated for the County Maintenance Bar and Roof Replacement Project, as the bid form submitted did not comply with the requirements of the indication to bid making it non-responsive.
And so, what was the, like, what happened there?
There was a, an entire section of the bid that was left blank, specifically the breakdown of the bid.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's pretty big. I was, I mean, there was just such a big jump between those two bids and then the lowest and best.
Right.
That, but that seems like that would be a material defect that can't be waived.
Right.
Would you agree with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because we couldn't ensure everything was even included in the bid.
Yeah, understood. Okay. That's too bad. That's really too bad.
All right. And then, item number 13 is, the Maintenance Department is requesting the Board award the bid to 5K Commercial Roofing LLC for the replacement of the County Maintenance Bar and Roof in the amount of $660,000, which is $614,000 as a base bid, $21,000 for Option 1, a contract that was likely for protection, and $25,000 as a contingency allowance, as they represented the lowest and best bid.
And so, that's still significantly below the engineer's estimate?
Yes. The engineer's estimate was 849 for 420.
And can, I mean, can I ask just a dumb question? Because I haven't experienced this before, where there's been, like, the bottom two have such material defects. I mean, we can't just scrap this and try it again in a few months? Is that not?
Well, we had four very good bids.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, fair enough, right?
Yeah.
It's still below the engineer's estimate.
Yes.
Okay.
And they are committing to having it completed by the end of the year, which was the target.
Okay.
And this is with synthetic chingles?
Yes, it is with synthetic chingles. We did vet out the contractor as well. They are highly qualified. They are licensed by EchoStar, which is the slate maker. So, they, it seemed like are pretty solid.
Okay. And we have the budget for this, Adrian?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'll move to approve items number 11, 12, and 13.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 14 is Department of Water Resources.
Good morning. I'm Kathleen Mutter with Water Resources. We're here today to ask the Board approval and authorize Rob Spindler, the State Authorized Representative, to execute the request for partial payment number two, which shook Construction Company for the McPhail West Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project. And that partial payment is in the amount of $349,970. And also to execute the Ohio Water Development Authority Contractor's estimate and fund payment request number two in the same amount of money.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Which is the one?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Les Williams from the General Court, and I am here to ask, request that the Board approve and authorize the question of the Board to execute the amended 2025 Department of Youth Services reclaim grant application to reallocate funds between grant group programs with no overall change to the grant budget.
Can you talk about the grant fit?
Sure. So, the Department of Youth Services is a subsidy grant, a reclaim grant is a grant that we've had with the court for decades. The Department of Youth Services funds, gives the court funds to develop programming to keep kids out of DVS. So, we use the funds to fund our probation department. We do drug testing. We have the electronic monitoring program funded out of that program. We offer pay-for-assessments for kids and families that can't afford to get competency evaluations, drug and alcohol assessments,亲子评估 assessments. And then we have a program called the FLIP program, where we do mediation, visitation for parents, we supervise visitation, co-parenting classes, you know, that's.
Okay. And so, this reallocation, this is just looking at, you know, you make a budget of what you think you're going to spend.
Right.
And then you kind of figure out what you're actually spending, and you.
Have to move money to each other, too. So, it looks like that probation department needed approximately $1,000 more to cover mileage, and that it's going to be moved from the grant administration section of the grants. And then the intensive monitoring program actually needed $8,100 more dollars to cover electronic monitoring expenses, and that is being moved from the screen and it's an assessment, of course, of the grant.
So, can you talk to me about the grant administration? Because it seems like that is a big chunk of where the grant is going.
So, I don't handle the financial piece. I can only talk about the programming itself.
Okay.
But the grant administration would be, I think, at one point in time, I was covered under the, my sovereignty was covered under the grant administration because I supervise or I supervise all the programming.
Okay.
So, but I don't do that. I don't believe that's in the grant for 2026.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, I guess if the state allows it, that's fine. But I've just, I'm no, I'm no grant expert.
Sure.
But I have never seen this large a percentage go to the administration of a grant. Like, usually you see, like, 5%, 10% of prior grants. And, I mean, that's, that's a big chunk of change.
I'm not responsible for figuring out the financial pieces to what program is the dollar amount.
Right, I understand. So, I'll move to approve item number 14.
Second.
Okay. Thank you.
Aye.
Oh. Oh, 15, I'm sorry. I make motion to approve item number 15.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
So, 16, 17, 18, and 19 are all related to the ninth amendment for Resilience and Urban Use of County Card Cards. This is to do the replacement cards with Department of Aging to add the relevant core technology. So, 16 is to do the length of the resolution approving the use of those cards. 17 is the application for Department of Aging's departments. 18 is the application for IT, or, and then number 19 is the certification request, the request of the use of those County Card Cards for the county's 19.
So, the only question I have is that 16, like, I noticed there's people that are no longer with the county that are still listed on this.
We did a huge cleanup last time.
Okay.
So, we have to show, show me who they are.
Okay.
Because we did a huge cleanup last night.
That's what I didn't know, like, if there was a procedure. I mean, I don't, I don't really think it's going to be an issue, but I do.
We did number eight, it was a huge, and, and.
Okay.
A lot of staff.
Okay, got it. So, can we just make a motion to approve 16, 17, 18, and 19?
Sure.
Second.
Which is the one?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Amy, do you have anything?
No.
Now, it's item number 21. Anybody has any public comment? They have three minutes.
Howard South Rutherford Village, and I thank the sheriff for the wonderful job they did today, including on the traffic report outside Gate 4. Well, the people, new people, well, the protection, the, the, to help again, careful people, we all deserve more. If the sheriff's work, we have to increase, for those people that they can help, traffic report. Thank you, guys. I hope the people make more, even.
Aye, thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. This is Jim Viner.